Six o'clock, ready? Welcome to the October 21st, 2024 meeting of the Carver School Committee. If you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. It's great to see so many happy faces. I just want to say quickly that after the recognitions or after your participation is over, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But we also understand if you'd like to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. So feel free to just head on out. So with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Neave.
All right, we're excited to start this evening with some recognitions for our students on the MCAS exam. Actually, over the next three meetings, we'll be recognizing our students district-wide who received exceeding expectations on one or more of their MCAS exam sections. By exceeding, by scoring exceeding expectations in the spring of 2024, these students represented scores in the top 10 or 15% of the state, depending on the grade level, depending on the test, but really truly an outstanding accomplishment. So their scores were amongst the best of all students in Massachusetts. And I do think it's appropriate to take a few minutes just to recognize them and thank them for their hard work, for their dedication to their own education, and also thank our teachers and their families for their support of them as well. So we're very excited to start our recognitions. What we're going to do is we're going to stand up, we're going to invite everyone up. I will give you a certificate, then we're going to ask you to stay up front. So the first person up gets to stay up here, I guess, I know you're excited about that. And then we'll do some pitches at the end. Okay, all right, here we go.
So Ariel Barroza for exceeding expectations in ELA. El Bolio for exceeding expectations in ELA and math. Trevor Bienvenu for exceeding expectations in ELA and math. Amelia Brooks for exceeding expectations in math and chemistry. Joshua Clark for exceeding expectations in math on the MCAS. Ellie Craig Pelagi for exceeding expectations in math. Jason DePerceo for exceeding expectations in English and ELA. Reed Dari for exceeding expectations in ELA and math. Isaiah Doussard for exceeding expectations in math. Kiera Farley for exceeding expectations in science. Daxton Fuller for exceeding expectations in ELA and math. Malak Kazai for exceeding expectations in science. Emery Gurney for exceeding expectations in math. Elise Hagen for exceeding expectations in ELA. And Owen Harder for exceeding expectations in ELA. Congratulations to all of our students for exceeding expectations in ELA, math and science. Why don't y'all come together? Two pair of voices up here. Pictures, everybody loves to be in a picture. They're a tall picture.
Stay put for a second. Congratulations.
You literally fly from soccer fields down here?
Oh, we're kidding. It's very busy. I don't even have my purse with me. I literally raced out of the house without my purse. I got water, my phone, my glasses.
Oh, sorry? I'm pretty sure that was a good point for my brothers.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Enjoy our rest. Always great to highlight the wonderful things our students accomplished. Aww, that's so great.
Charlie McCall, Kazie.
I knew I said a lot of apologies. I didn't know what I said. I'll send them off. This is yours.
No worries. Thank you so much for coming. All righty then, let's see, I see Tom Pinto is on Zoom. So for comments from the EAPC, welcome, Tom.
Good figure, buddy. Great stuff, as always. Having you before it come on, it's awesome. So great weather, good hat, I want to put that out there also. So the EAPC has been working with the town and the other unions as we try to navigate through everything that's gone on with health and travel over the past year. Overall, the conversations have been productive and are no longer over the top. We'll look forward to continuing that. But I'd also like to put out that also per contract, we need to convene the Workover Committee meeting. So Scott, if you'd like to set out some times and dates, I'm assuming it's telling people we're joining you.
I will. I will do that, Tom.
Yep.
Yeah, now we will get a meeting before the deadline, awesome.
Absolutely. Oh, thank you very much, Tom. Okay, so that brings us to elementary student ambassadors. Welcome, welcome, welcome. We're very excited to have you. Don't be nervous.
Yes, we're excited to have Mackenzie McLeod, Chloe Clancy, Jayla King, and Kendall Short here as our student ambassadors telling us some things that have been happening at the elementary school.
Welcome, everybody. I'm Mackenzie.
I'm Jayla.
I'm Chloe.
I'm Kendall.
We are student ambassadors from Carver Elementary School, and we want to share some great activities happening at our school.
The first day of school was a fun experience. We got to meet our teachers and learn more about our classmates.
We even got to play games.
We saw our friends again after a long summer.
Now we're fifth graders, we're the leaders of the school.
A couple of grades have already gone with field trips.
Field trips are a fun way for us to learn in a different way. Second grade went on a farm, went to a farm to pick pumpkins.
I remember doing that.
They're so lucky.
Third grade did a walking field trip and went to town buildings.
I remember when I was that little.
I can't wait for our field trips in the spring.
There are many different clubs at Carver Elementary School. One of them is Video Production Club with Mrs. Kent.
Another club is the Drama Club. You get to act out a role in a play, and it is very fun and amusing to watch.
This year, the musical is The Lion King. There is also a chorus for fourth and fifth graders with Miss Kramp.
Running Club is a fun way to get exercise in the morning.
It helps so you burn energy before you go to class.
There's more clubs that are starting this year. There's Bike Riding Club, Futsal, etc. We are lucky to have so many opportunities.
The Booster Club came to our school, and we had an awesome fun run.
It helps us raise money for our schools so we can get things that we need.
We raised over $50,000, and the money will go towards field trips, playground equipment, and teacher resources for the classroom.
The day of the fun run, we got, we got, got to the field and watched. A lot of families coming watching. The theme this year was Castle Quest. And it involves challenges that show traits like bravery, creativity, focus, and more.
Castle Quest!
Reader Dog is a fun way for kids to practice reading. Students rotate between several dogs that come visit our school and lay down while kids are reading.
It's cool to see Dancy and her friends around the school.
They're trained and very good around kids. Sometimes kids are nervous about reading out loud, but the dogs help them build confidence.
Ah, Savannah!
This year, the musical is Lion King, and auditions are taking place this week.
There are lots of fun characters. I did skate stage for last year, and I will be doing the same this year.
We handed help props, put together candy grams, and helped Miss Kramp put the show off.
Every role is very important to the play.
When the show is ready to be performed, the whole school watches the show in the morning. Later that night, families are invited to come to school and watch the performance.
Change sings our school book again this year.
Last year, it was, last year, it was about ways students could change their classroom and school.
This year, the focus is on community and ways students can change the world around them.
We can be a good friend, be kind, and also we will be working on projects to help others. We even sang a song in music class about the book.
Have a great evening.
And remember, above all, be kind.
Very nice job, girls. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Lots of great things happening at the elementary school. Looking forward to seeing the Lion King. It sounds amazing. Okay, so that brings us to captains' council. You have a tough act to follow, but we're very happy to have you.
So we're excited to have our football captains here this evening. Darian King, Cam Larranger, Jack Reed, and Teagan Zakaruski. Jack Balzerini is also one of the football captains. Just to share a little bit what's going on in high school athletics. And so far, the football season's off to, I know it was a tough night the other night, but overall, it's been a great season so far.
All right, hi, I'm Teagan Zakaruski, and I'm a captain of the Carver football team. My name's Darian. I'm also a captain for the football team.
My name's Jack Reed. I'm also captain.
My name's Cam Larranger. I'm also a captain.
So we would like to talk about the accomplishments of our season. So our football team is currently ranked number one in Division Eight in the South Shore League, and we are currently four and two. We've had many accomplishments over the past few years, and especially last year. This year, we've had both Jack Balzerini and Noel Canely voted for Patriot Ledger Player of the Week on multiple occasions. Our team also has also had to face and overcome adversity and many challenges this year with new coaching. We also would like to say that we really appreciate our new coaches and think they're doing a great job so far. We hope to continue our success this year and hopefully take it all the way to the Super Bowl again.
So now we're just going to talk about some of the other sports and how they're doing. So our volleyball team is ranked number seven in D5, and they are 16 and one, and they just won the South Shore League. And some recent accomplishments include Amanda Byron had 100 digs and 100 kills, Maeve Zakaruski had 100 kills, and Riley Jenkins had 100 assists. And so far, this is our best season in program history.
All right, and next up, we have girls soccer. Girls soccer plays their final regular season game next Monday at Hull and are on the cusp of a postseason berth. Sarah Stares also won the Girls Athlete of the Week on October 16th.
Boys soccer plays their final game at Rising Tide on October 30th. They will finish the season out of the playoffs, but they found success in team camaraderie. Camaraderie, yep. And are excited to bring back their full roster next season as they re-enter the SSL.
Would also like to talk about field hockey. Field hockey has caught fire as of their late win, 1-0 on Senior Night, October 15th. They currently sit just outside of the top 32 for playoffs, but with a couple of good performances this week, they could have a chance of getting in.
Our golf team has had a very strong season, finishing 11 and four. And they also won the South Shore League. And in the state sectionals, Finn Manning and Kyle Hoffman both placed within the top nine, which advanced them to the state finals. And freshman Landon Salawada also competed and had a very strong year. And this is one of the best, the team's best season in program history.
All right, and next up is Cheer. Cheer competed in Milford last week. They have been consistent in showing up and performing well during the football games. Cheer also has upcoming competitions for November 4th, the 10th, and the 17th.
So for cross-country, Senior Night was October 15th, where Caleb Perkins was recognized. Cross-country has had a bunch of personal accomplishments this season, as well as five wins in a row in capturing the South Shore League Open Division Championship.
Esports, Esports has had a record of 10 and 12 across five different types of video games so far this year. They're having fun and enjoying playing as a team and developing as a group as well.
And lastly, we have our Unified Soccer Team, and they just concluded their season last week with a game in Abington, and they finished their season three and one.
That's all we have to go.
It's been, it's been a great fall season. We've had some outstanding accomplishments, a bunch of the South Shore League titles, and maybe some sports where we don't usually win the South Shore League, which is great. So with the golf team winning and cross-country and football continuing their success, hopefully still being number one tomorrow when the rankings come out. We're looking for another great run. So guys, thanks for your time. Thanks for being here this evening. I don't know if anybody has any questions for them or...
Yeah, thank you for bringing here.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
It's been a great season all around.
Yep, keep grinding.
And thanks for coming.
Thing I can't get over is how fast the season has gone by. I feel like the season is flying by, but they're doing so great. So many smiling faces out there in uniforms. It's great to see it, great crowds, too. So kudos to the community for coming out to support our athletes. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the general public. I don't see anyone in the audience who I think would like to participate as they're all staff of our district. Hello, thank you for joining us. I don't know if there's anyone on Zoom, but if there is anyone on Zoom that would like to be recognized.
And we do have a couple of attendees on Zoom. I just opened up the chat, so if you're on Zoom and you'd like to comment during public comment, this would be the time to put your name into the chat. Seeing none.
Okay, we shall close comments from the general public, and we shall move on to the approval of minutes from our September 30th, 2024 open session minutes. I move that we approve the September 30th, 2024 open session minutes. I second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I... Thank you, Gina, for taking our notes for us. We appreciate it. No communications this evening?
No communications.
Okay, so that brings us to reports from the superintendent.
So we have personnel updates first. We have had a couple staff movements or additions since last time we met. Kelly Caniff is a long-term substitute teacher in special education at the elementary school, and Samuel Kamire is a long-term substitute teacher for science at the middle high school. That's all of our staff movements since our last meeting.
Okay, great. So that brings us right to MCAS data review with Dr. Erickson.
Just give me a second to share my screen here.
I know folks at home should have received, should be receiving the results in the mail.
Yeah, they should, they should have received by now. They went out over, yeah, almost over a week ago. Yeah, they went over a week ago. So people should have their individual scores. Hi, we should be good.
All right, thank you. So as you know, this is an annual opportunity to share out an analysis of how our students did in spring 2024. So for big picture itinerary, we're going to review the results, looking at both achievement and growth, and then our district comparisons to some regional districts and talk about the work that's been done around analysis and the action planning for our next steps. So I always start with a gray level layout of the performance level. So in the maroon, we have exceeding. In the purple, we have meeting. In orange, we have partially meeting. And in green, we have not meeting. Just as a general consideration, English Language Arts made some growth, and you'll see that as I go on and I talk about that. But statewide, English Language Arts is actually down across the board and on grade levels. So one of the things that Acting Commissioner Johnson mentioned when he was reviewing state results is that Desi is feeling like this is signaling the impacts of COVID in the long term. And just that reminder that as students age up, the expectations around rigor with reading and then the volume of reading that they need to do in order to be successful in school increases. And so we're starting to see kind of those, or we're continuing to see, I should say, those gaps that existed as a result of interrupted learning and less time in class. So just a comment about that. The next one is math, and these are the Carver results for math. But at the state level, again, they were noticing that there was kind of a mixed bag, is how they referred to it, in terms of how students performed. And I'll get into some more of the grade level specifics in just a second. And then science, fifth, eighth, and then 10th grade. Just as a note, because this is always confusing for folks, the 10th grade scores are actually from spring 2023, because we're given a window we assess in ninth grade, right after students take introductory physics and they take the physics test. And so these are students that are currently juniors, but this is how they did on that test if we're looking across the board at those three different pivotal grades. So now if we compare ourselves to the state, this is the percentage of students that are meeting and exceeding. The state is in orange, and we are in cranberry. And you'll notice that in English Language Arts, that by 10th grade, we were right at the state average. But you can see that we fell below the state average in grades preceding 10th grade. In math, you see a different story. And you'll notice that in fourth and fifth grade in particular, we well outperformed the state in the percentage of meeting and exceeding. And then you can see that it's rough and rocky, for lack of a better term, at the middle school level, which I'll explain in just a minute to contextualize that. And then lastly, in science, you can see where we are compared to the state as well. So one of the things that we focus the most on, and I personally feel is super important, is growth. And how are we doing compared to other grade levels, to other content areas, and to where the state is with growth? So on the next slide, you'll see a comparison of how Carver did on English Language Arts and math. And right at the 50th percentile line, you'll see that that line is dotted. So the state recognizes that average growth, including the state average, is 50. So you can see that, for example, if we look at fourth grade, they don't report out on third grade, because third grade is the first time that they take the MCAS. But you'll notice that in English Language Arts, we grew more than the state by one. And in math, we grew more than the state by 17. So you'll see that, you know, in different places, that our growth was substantial. And then in other areas, we noticed less growth.
And just to give some context for the community and for the committee in terms of how they establish growth, I think sometimes, even when people look at their own MCAS score reports, they may not fully understand how their growth is determined. So what they do actually is they compare all students in the state within a score band or a score range. And then they take that subset of students and then plot out their performance the next year from the student, so if we take a very specific number, say, students who scored, it's literally this, well, it's like, I think it's a four-point band. So students who scored from 500 to 504. They take all those students in the state who scored in that band, and then the next year, they plot out their scores. And if you had the best score of those students, which is 500, 504, your growth is 100%. If you had the worst score, the growth would be 0, 1%. And the goal, the goal is to be 50 or above, because that means you grew more than the average of the same students who scored the same as you the previous year. So that's how they determine these growth scores. So obviously, the goal is always to be above the 50 percentile as a school, as a, you know, a grade level.
Yeah, so thank you. And then when we look at subgroups, again, it's pretty typical across the board at the state level that, that these are lower than 50. So you'll notice for English learners at the state level, that just happens to be 50. But our English learners in Carver grew in English Language Arts. They were in the 61st percentile in terms of average growth. And then you'll notice that we outperformed in students with disabilities and low-income students as well. Where we are on par with the state in terms of growth is high needs. And everybody always asks what the definition of high needs is. And high needs is kind of like a catch-all bucket for any student that has any of these designations. So English language, students with disabilities, low income, and then any race. And I'm forgetting one that we don't get reported out on, so...
It would actually be EL.
Yeah, thank you. And so that is like, if you have any one or more of those designations, you're considered high needs according to the state. You'll notice in math that, again, our English language learners perform the state by 15 percentile points. And then our students with disabilities outperform, and so do our low-income students. And overall, our high needs students outperform the state average in growth, which shows good upward movement. We like that. So then if we look at regional comparisons, we are reporting out on fifth, eighth, and 10th grade, but we included fourth grade, too, because we noticed that there was a significant amount of growth for our fourth grade students, as I showed you on a couple of slides before. So we just felt like we wanted to share that out as well. So you'll notice on all of these graphs that the comparison districts are in blue. The state is in green, and we are in Carver Cranberry. So for fourth grade, English Language Arts, you'll notice that we're just below the state. In fifth grade, you'll notice that regionally, we have work to do. And in grade eight, same thing. And then when you get to grade 10, you'll see that we are much closer to the state average and outperform a lot of the regional comparisons. Math tells a different story. And you'll notice that we outperform in fourth grade with math. And then in fifth grade with math, less so in eighth grade. And then in 10th grade, we're kind of middle of the pack there compared to regional districts. So a couple of things to note. Oh, whoops, sorry. I jumped right over science. I apologize for that. So fifth grade, science, eighth grade, science. And then 10th grade, science. Thank you. So before we get into the so what of how do we use this data to improve, we also just want to keep our eye on chronic absenteeism. And I just want to compliment the administrations in both the middle high school and the elementary school who worked diligently this past year to reduce chronic absenteeism. So I just put the pre-COVID statistics in Carver Cranberry, and then where we ended up, you'll see in bold. For 2024, you'll notice that for non-high school students, which would be all of our students up through eighth grade, that we were able to reduce our chronic absenteeism to 9.4. So we're not back to pre-COVID levels, but we definitely made gains across the board. And then you'll notice for high school students, grades 9 through 12, we cut our chronic absenteeism between 2023 and 2024 in half, which is great. Because if you remember last year, we had slides that showed the impact of chronic absenteeism on test scores, and we'll show that again. So of those students that were chronically absent, the 9.4 in non-high school and the 15.2 in high school, the impact on English Language Arts is... the impact on English Language Arts is on the next slide. Sorry.
And just if I want to, I want to reinforce this whole concept of chronic absenteeism again. Obviously, again, thank you to the admin teams of both buildings because they worked really hard on following up with families and talking about the importance of being in school. But ultimately, those numbers are still almost twice what they were pre-COVID. We've made great strides, but we got to, we have to continue that work and continue to make those strides because we want to get back to the pre-COVID numbers of 5.5% of students being defined as chronically absent in our non-high school age and 7.2 at high school age, even better. And just again, definitions. Chronically absent is a student who misses more than 18 days in a school year, more than 10% of the school year. And it doesn't matter, there's no excused absences. When the state looks at chronic absenteeism, they just want to know, were you in school, were you not in school? So any student who missed more than 18 days would be defined as chronically absent. And obviously, last year, we talked a lot about this, spent a lot of time on this, that those numbers were like really concerning. But our numbers were not outliers last year, and they're not outliers this year. There's still, the states are a very similar drop in terms of having that go down statewide. So I do think people are beginning to fully reengage back in school. But in my mind, we still have a ways to go because we'd like to see that get closer to all those pre-COVID numbers. And they're not on here, but if you had the pre-COVID numbers, they're fairly consistent. You know, obviously, there's always a little variation from year to year, but this number of 5.5 and 7.2 is generally where it was. So we want to, we want to get back to that. Sorry.
No, thank you. That was really important information. So thank you for sharing. So in terms of impact on English Language Arts, you'll notice that the students who are chronically absent are in orange and those who did not miss 18 or more days are in purple. So you'll notice that there's an increased amount of students who are chronically absent and were not meeting expectations. That gap widens for math. So if we look at math, you'll notice that it's really double. So 11% of students were not meeting expectation. If they were not chronically absent, that bumps up to 22% for chronically absent students. And then the same thing for science. With science, it's, if you were present, you were nearly three times more likely to meet expectations in science. So we always say that if you miss school, you miss out, and this data proves that. So for next steps, we're in the process of doing a lot of analysis and action. So as you know, one of the things that we're looking really intently at is the impact of our curriculum in reading and writing. And I know last year, we kind of peeled back the onion a little bit and really looked at our English Language Arts scores. And at that point, we had started, we had conducted our first year of our new reading program in K through two. And we were in the process of rolling it out in grade, I'm sorry, K through three, in the process of rolling it out in grades four and five. And so we did notice that there was a discrepancy between reading and writing. And this year is the same. I will say that even though writing is significantly lower than reading, we did make gains. So I was just looking in all of our grade levels, our reading percentiles actually went up except for two. And in writing, they went up in every grade level except for one. So even in cases where the growth might be slight, we are noticing an upward movement. I will say that in seventh grade, the seventh graders, it says here, were at a 40. As sixth graders, they were at 26. So that was a significant amount of growth in terms of writing. And it is a focus of both buildings to make sure that we're looking at that. So on the next slide, it just kind of outlines that when scores became available, we got busy analyzing the data, looking at it at the school level, the department level, the grade level. And then as Mr. Anief mentioned, we sent out individual reports to parents last week along with beginning-of-year NWEA reports so that parents had both of those data points. On both of those reports, there's good information about how to support your student and how you can partner with your children's teacher or child's teacher to be able to work on that. And then at the school level, we have geared professional development and then personalized coaching at the elementary level to support students. So all of our teachers in grades K through five had the opportunity to meet individually with our math coach and our literacy coach to look at student-level data for their current class and to talk about how to tailor instruction and meet the needs of all learners. They wrapped that up last week. And then I mentioned earlier that our middle school math has work to do. If you remember, last year, we adopted a new math program called illustrative. And we noticed gains in seventh grade, but we noticed that there was far less growth and far less achievement in sixth and eighth grade. So looking at that, the department chair and principal Cabral were able to request professional developments. We have someone coming down from Leslie University over Election Day, which is our whole, like our full-day PD day, who is going to be able to craft some solid professional development to meet the needs of teachers that are trying to implement that curriculum. Additionally, we are in our first year of rolling out the writing curriculum at the elementary school and have done a lot of walkthroughs already and have watched how that's going. And teachers are giving us great feedback, predominantly around the volume of writing that students are able to do. The other thing is with that writing program, they embed a lot of the things that we remember about writing, like grammar and spelling and mechanics, so that students are getting feedback and able to incorporate that piece as well. The other thing that is a focus in both buildings is looking at deeper learning and student engagement and finding opportunities for students to help drive their instruction and to have more opportunity to process the content that they're learning. So that's been a significant focal point as we've moved forward. And then we're also continuing with something that we started last year in our MCAS action plan, and that is bringing back benchmark writing. So teachers have the opportunity to have a common prompt among all students in the grade level and then calibrate their scoring of that and do a touch point on where each student is at and then be able to support those students in differentiated groups moving forward. So I just shared a ton of information with you. I'm curious if you have any questions. And we planned it so that Mr. Anief would talk about accountability right after I talked about MCAS because the two ride tandem. So if you don't have any questions right now, I'm happy to answer some after we talk about accountability also.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for that in-depth presentation.
Then we'll transition over to accountability, if that works for everybody. Any second to get that up.
Bless you.
So the state uses MCAS scores and some other indicators to determine an accountability rating for all school districts. And this is actually required under federal law. So what is it? And I just told you that this came. The accountability system is a set of policies and practices that the state uses to measure and hold schools and districts responsible for raising student achievement and to prompt and support improvement where necessary. The current accountability system was implemented in 2018 is when it started. And it meets the federal requirements under the Every Student Succeeds Act, or known as ESSA. The system was paused during the pandemic from 2020 to 2022. So there were no accountability ratings during that time period when students weren't taking either any MCAS exam or the full MCAS exam. Rob Curran is the Associate Commissioner for Data and Accountability. He oversees the accountability system. I've seen him present on the accountability system several times. And he always makes the statement of, you know, the accountability system is just one piece of evidence and certainly not the only element that represents quality of school. Sort of that same theme with the MCAS scores. And I think what you're going to see in the accountability data and also in the MCAS scores in general, there's some highs and lows, there's some ups and downs. There's some places where we performed well. There's some places where we didn't perform as well. But in terms of overall accountability, our accountability rating actually improved this year. And we're going to find out our accountability improved, rating improved because we had growth. So if you go back to merit slides, several of the growth slides showed we're either at the state level for growth or above the state's level in terms of growth. And really, the accountability system isn't solely about achievement alone. It's also factors in a lot of growth. So since we had high growth in some areas and we were moving in the right direction in some areas, that then you're going to see we earned the points for growth and actually have an improved accountability rating. So what are the levels? So there's two big levels. Schools not requiring assistance or intervention, which is about 85% of the schools in Massachusetts. That's broken into four subcategories. Schools meeting or exceeding targets, schools with substantial progress towards meeting targets, schools with moderate progress towards meeting targets, or schools with limited progress towards meeting targets. Our rating this year is a school not requiring assistance or intervention and a school with substantial progress towards meeting targets. Last year, our rating was, and really, I'm saying schools, really district. They give both district levels and school levels. These are district levels. Last year, our rating was a school district with moderate progress towards meeting targets. So we moved up one level in the overall accountability system. There's also a second sublevel called schools requiring assistance or intervention, which is about 15% of the schools in Massachusetts. They require focused target support or broad comprehensive support. So there's like two levels within that, if you fall in that category. So we're not, we're not close to that category. We're not, we're not there. So how do they come up with these ratings? So this is the categorization, what it stands for. So we're going to find out that our, our target percentage is going to be 50 to 74% as a school district. So we met 50 to 74% of our targets. And that's why we received the rating of substantial progress towards meeting targets. If you're 75 to 100% of your targets, then you're meeting or exceeding expectations, et cetera. I might read every category for you, but basically, it's broken into quartiles for those four groups. So what do they look at? Now for, it's interesting for the accountability system. They don't, though most school districts break their schools into elementary schools and middle schools and high schools, the accountability system does not do that. The accountability system looks at non-high school, which is all grades of the, is grades K through eight is what they're looking at. And then high schools, nine through 12. And then they use different factors for different types of schools. And then that's all combined together and averaged together for your district rating based on the number of schools you have. For us, it's very easy because we have two schools. So it's easy, it really is a straight average between how the high school scored or, and how the non-high school scored. I can't say how the elementary school scored because it's grades K through. So in non-high schools, they look at achievement, student growth. Obviously, they're not looking at high school completion. ELA proficiency, so how are your EL students doing? And chronic absenteeism. The high school just has some additional categories they look at. They add in four-year cohort graduation rate, what they call extended engagement rate. Extended engagement is a student who did not graduate within four years, but has stayed in school. So they keep moving towards their diploma. So they're there, they're there for a fifth year, hopefully not a sixth year. Most likely, a fifth year, and they've stayed engaged. They haven't dropped out, and they're going to stay in school. And the other thing that's put into your extended engagement rate is if you do have a student who drops out of school, they're always invited back, actually. So there's a process we go through if someone drops out to say, hey, we'd love to have you come back. And if you bring a student back who dropped out, that also goes into your extended engagement rate. And then your annual dropout rate. So those are factors that they look at for only high schools. Same for progressive students with EL students, chronic absenteeism. And then they have one additional indicator at the high school level, which is for your 11th and 12th graders, the percentage of students completing what they call advanced coursework. And DESI very clearly defines, there's a list. You can go on the DESI website if you want to and find, these are the advanced courses. So it's the percentage of your 11th and 12th grade students who are enrolled in at least one advanced course. So that counts as part of your accountability system. Examples, mostly it's AP courses. There's IB courses, International Baccalaureate, which we don't offer. Do enrollment courses, Project Lead the Way courses, or a couple other selected rigorous courses like pre-calculus. So like I said, there's actually an established list on DESI. And then you have to look at the percentage of your 11th and 12th graders who are in one or more of those courses. So obviously, since there's more factors at the high school level, the weighting of the factors is a little bit different. So they, you know, they add in 20% of your overall rating comes from this high school completion. You know, are students graduating in four years? What's your annual dropout rate? What's your extended engagement rate? So that, and what they did there is they take a little bit from achievement. So there's less of a focus on achievement at the high school level in terms of your accountability and more of a focus on high school completion and your additional indicators. Where your non-high schools, you know, two through or K through eight, if it's MCAS, it's, you know, three through eight, the achievement counts more at those levels because that factors in at 67%. So each year, they, DESI established targets based on your past performance. And then what they do is they determine what reasonable growth looks like. And they use what's called a 25% growth model. They want to see you grow 25% over two years. And through this, they establish a one-year growth target for all students. If your, if your, if your score is in the top 10% of the state in any category, you automatically earn either three or four points. We're going to find out, in the point system, you can earn from zero points to four. So even if your scores went down, you didn't reach your growth target, but your scores are in the top 10% of the state, you automatically get the points. Because that addresses that issue of, well, if we keep growing and keep growing and keep growing, and we get to the top, you can't keep growing. Eventually, when you're at the top, you can't always keep growing. So they factor that in by saying, well, if you're in the top 10% of the state in any category, whether you grew or not, whether you met your targets or not, you earn the points in the accountability system. So example, and I just randomly selected some targets. So these were our achievement targets based on scale score. So for all students in ELA from grades three through eight, they want to see our overall achievement go up by 1.9 points, 2.1 in math, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a different target for each subgroup based upon their past performance, based upon what kind of growth they're looking to get to get close to that average. So what happens? If your score in any area goes down, if you decline, you get zero points. If there's no change, you get one point. If you make an improvement but don't meet your target, but your score's improved, you get two points. If you meet your target, you get three points. And if you exceed your target, you get four points. So what does this all look like? I'm actually just going to take us to the DESI website because I want the community and the school community to be aware. This is, this information is publicly available. You can go to DESI and search what's called District Profiles. And if you pick Carver's District Profile, it will take you to this page. See if I can make this a little bigger. Maybe it still won't be great for people to see at home. Now, the one thing they do in the accountability system at the district level and at the school level is they actually, your accountability is based on a two-year rolling average. So if you, I talked about those targets and the points, and I'll show you some more detail of that in a second. But really, what this number is, it's a straight percentage. So in 2023, we met an average of 42% of our targets as a district. This year, we met 62%. We did better. So then they take those two and they roll it together for a rolling average of 54%. And that gives us our official rating. Next year, they'll take 2025, 2024, roll those two together. So hopefully, next year, our growth will continue to be good and we'd see a percentage of targets met 62, 60%, or 70% or 80%. And then they take that average and come up with a percentage. That's how they actually establish our rating of 54% substantial progress towards meeting targets. It's based on a two-year rolling average. Now, this is, might seem a little complicated. Maybe it is. So this is just overall, as a district, each area and how many points we earned. So remember, zero means we had no change or we declined in terms of our overall score. One means no change. Two, we grew, but we didn't meet our target. Three, we met our target. Four, we exceeded our target. target, four, we exceeded our target. So you can go through here and see where we were in each of these areas. And you can get into detail, literally, it's just a percentage of points. This is the total number of points you can earn. If you got all fours, you'd be at a hundred percent, right? If you get less than all fours, like we see on this matrix of scores up here, that's how you get up with your percentage, and then they weigh it out as a district. So, and then they also factor in lowest performing students and all students. Your lowest performing students were your students who scored in the lowest twenty-five percent the year before in your school. So you actually, to see growth in that group is great. So at the non-high school level, our lowest performing students, we actually earned seventy-six percent of our points. So we took our students in the lowest twenty-fifth percentile, lowest twenty-five percent, and we moved their schools up. Their scores were moving, they were moving in the right direction. You know, a couple of things that we want to look at, a couple of things I'll highlight here, you know, obviously, we were concerned at the high school level. It's a, this is where it's a mixed bag, and this is where, I think this is a good one to point out for accountability versus scores, right? So we looked at our ELA scores. Our ELA scores were right on the state average. And they were also, in the regional comparison, our overall scaled score for ELA was good, but we got zero points because they actually went down a little bit from last year. So overall, the actual scaled score of our tenth graders went down a couple of points, so we earned zero points. Over here at the all-student level, you know, we saw that we had some grade levels, some grade levels performed really well, fourth and fifth grade English. I mean, so fourth and fifth grade math scored really well, right? But we still only got three points, even though we probably exceeded our targets for some grade levels, but at other grade levels, we didn't. You know, so other grade levels, we were below. So it averages out when they look at overall math achievement because non-high school is everybody from grade three through eight. We didn't earn all of our points. Though, and, but if you actually looked at overall performance, our highest scores, I don't know if I'm making, this is making sense, but our highest actual scores were in tenth grade. Tenth grade was our best performing grade. But we got zero points with tenth grade because their scores were down a little bit compared to the year before. Where these other scores maybe weren't as strong, but we had growth. And obviously, we always want to have growth, so we earn points for that growth in the accountability system. You know, and then, and then there's some things that are anomalies, and I don't want to say anomaly, like dropout rate's a funny one. And I think, I don't know if you remember this from last year, dropout rate the previous year was like one, one and a half percent. And dropout rate's an annual, dropout rate is a straight percentage. It's a number of students who dropped out based on the number of students enrolled in your school. So, you know, if we want to do easy math, there's a hundred kids enrolled in your school and one drops out, your dropout rate is one percent. And our dropout rate was like one point five percent for our three hundred and seventy some odd high school students, which probably accounted to, I'm not going to do good math here, four students. You know, so approximately four students that year dropped out, but that was high for us. And it was less than the year before. So we went down. Did we meet our target? No. So last year, how many points did we get for annual dropout rate? We got zero. This year, we got four because we were compared to the, last year, we only had one student drop out. Our dropout rate was point four, I think. So, so we went from one point five to point four, and so we exceeded our target and we got all four points. But really, I'm not saying, I don't want to make light of it, but it's really the difference between one or two students dropping out. So like, that's a tough one. And obviously, we don't want anybody to drop out. We want our dropouts to be zero, right? But that one, sometimes that one's a funny one because our numbers were so small and one or two students can really swing. So last year, we had one student drop out. This year, if we have two, how many points are we going to get next year for this? We're going to get zero points. So, but you see, there are some anomalies within the system as a small school. The interesting part is unless we somehow, two gets us in the top ten percent of the state. Because remember, that's the one caveat, if you're in the top ten percent of the state, then you're supposed to earn all four points. But last year, being one and a half, our dropout rate being one and a half percent, didn't get us in the top ten of the state. Could, I use the example of two, could two keep us in the top ten? Is one student dropping out in the top ten? Probably. So, you know, that's why I wanted to point out some interesting anomalies that are in here. What they will look at is this advanced coursework. Our number went down a little bit, didn't go down a lot, but we actually had a few, fewer students take advanced coursework compared to the year before. So we got zero because we didn't grow, you know, it went down slightly. Now, to show the comparison, they actually, when they look at this, they show the year before compared to this year. So you can look at this and see, we actually met many of our targets, we got a lot of twos and threes, we had good growth this year. So that's why I'm saying our MCAS scores in many ways were mixed. There was a lot of positives, there's a lot of things you could hold on to and say, you know, we put a real focus last year, both building principles and teaching teams spent a lot of time developing an MCAS action plan, looking to improve scores. And there are clearly pockets where scores improved and our students grew. You know, looking at this lowest twenty, twenty-five percent, that's a huge number. You know, that this, that our lowest performing students earned seventy-six percent of the targets. You know, so we had growth amongst our students who were struggling the most. That's a positive. So the scores really are a little bit of a mixed bag. But when you compare it to last year's in terms of the, there's a lot more zeros out there, a lot more ones, blah, blah, it's just a lot more zeros, quite honestly. And that led us to a much lower rating of forty-two percent, so meaning forty-two percent of our targets versus sixty-two percent of our targets. I can spend, I could spend the next two hours on this if you wanted to, which I'm sure you don't want to. But what I will point out is, what I will point out, I do want to show this because I think this is really interesting in terms of also, so I think, I think this year's MCAS scores actually say that we've done a good job of having growth. We want more growth, right? We want our students to continually progress. But we also did a good job with our, with our subgroups. So you, on this data, you can, you can dive into this as much as you want. I'll show you where you can dive, I won't do all the dives. But I'll, because again, we could dive for a long time. But I want to show some of this data. So for example, this student site, when you go to student, when you click on this tab, student group results, you can pick a group. This is, just happens to be high needs, which is anybody who has any of the other categories, which we may have talked about earlier. You know, in high needs, at the non-high school level, we met eighty-one percent of our targets. That's a hu, that's a huge number for that group. I'm going to pull up one other one, special needs. So our students with disabilities. You know, interestingly enough, we didn't have enough because we only test in tenth grade. I asked that, that's interesting. We didn't have enough students with disabilities to qualify for them to give us a rating. Because it's only one grade level and it didn't meet the, their end number to say that this is reliable data. But at the non-high school level, including our middle school, some of our middle school scores were low, we are ninety-three percent of our points for our students with disabilities, for our students engaged three through eight. I mean, I think that's, I think that's huge, that's a really positive thing. And I'll just show you one more, I said I wasn't going to dive too far, but we can keep diving a little bit. And then our low-income subgroup was not as strong, but seventy-four percent of our targets at the non-high school level and fifty-six percent of our targets at the high school level for an overall average of almost seventy percent. So it was our subgroups that performed really well in terms of our overall scores. Last thing I'll show you, which I won't spend a lot of time on, is for each of these things, so if you go back to this, you can go into detailed data and find out why did we get zero or four for ELA? And so if you just click on detailed data for each indicator, and we'll do high school first, you know, high school in two thousand and three, all students, we scored five oh three, that was our average score. Which, as I said, if you actually look at all of our average scores, that's the best score. Four ninety-nine, we went down, which is actually still our best average score. The tenth grade students did the best in overall scaled score, but the change was negative three, they didn't meet their target, which was five oh six. So they wanted us to go from five oh three to five oh six. We went down to four ninety-nine, so we got zero points. And so you can figure out, you can look at, and then I'll just pick one other one, looking, we'll do math because, so in math, our, our, all students for non-high school three through eight, the average scaled score was, was four ninety point five. This year, it went up to four ninety-two point four, change of one point one, which was meeting our target, is not viewed as exceeding our target. So our target was one point one, so we earned three points. And like I said, all this information is publicly available, you can go through it all and look at every single thing that's on the overall results. You can find out why we earned the number of points we earned for each section. But overall, the big picture is that our accountability score has improved because we met a lot of our targets. The percentage of targets we met improved because our student growth improved. We want more, we want it to grow further. But there was some growth and there was some positives out of this year's MCAS scores. And so finally, what's our takeaways? I already talked about some of these things. We didn't, Merit and I didn't talk about this a lot, but when you, if you go back to the regular scores, the bottom line is we need to move kids from partially meeting expectations to meeting expectations. You know, we have too many, our largest percentage is partially meeting. And we need to move more of those students out of that partially meeting into the meeting, right? And as we do that, then we're going to continue to meet our targets. We're going to continue to see our scores improve. And we're going to know that our students are doing better and being more successful. And then also, you know, we just need to continue to focus on these performance indicators. I think chronic absenteeism, that, we're going to stay with that focus this year, both building, it's really important, I talked about that a little bit. We're going to look at advanced coursework at the middle high school and making sure that we're pushing students to take those advanced courses in their junior and senior year. Just, because really, the standard is one. They're just looking for students, each junior and senior to take one class as defined as an advanced course. And I think our percentage, I didn't dive into the data, I don't quote it exactly, it was somewhere around sixty-seven percent. And the year before, it was closer to seventy, so it was seventy or sixty-nine, so we went from sixty-nine percent to sixty-seven percent in that area. So it went down a little bit, so we didn't earn the points. But I think it's appropriate for seventy, seventy-five, eighty percent of our students to take at least one advanced course in their junior and senior year as defined by DESI. You know, so that's something we can certainly look at as a, as a, as a school district and guidance as we're talking to kids about what courses they're taking and be encouraging students to challenge themselves and push themselves and have that rigorous experience. Because ultimately, that's going to, that's going to help prepare them for work or career or college, whichever direction they tend to go in. So I think everything else on the slide has been said. And I, like Merit, I will open it up to any questions people have or thoughts or.
I'll just say that I appreciate the level of detail that you reported out to us. I actually did go on to DESI and do a deep dive into our district report because that's just who I am. And I'm grateful for the work that's being done. I'm thankful for their recognition that, you know, while we have made achievements, that our students are, you know, capable of learning more and that the focus is there to help them continue to progress. So I just want to say thank you for all of the work that everyone puts in to help our students succeed and for reporting the information to us. It's, I know for myself, it's greatly appreciated.
And just know that, you know, we use the MCAS as a barometer. We use it as a ability to look at student growth and performance and achievement. And as Rob Curran says, it's not the only thing. There's a lot of things that measure a successful school, there's a lot of things that measure a successful student, there's a lot of things that measure a successful teacher. And MCAS is one of those things that we look at, we look at a wide spectrum of things. But teachers do look at this data in terms of, you know, what their curriculum. And it's more curriculum alignment and making sure we align with state standards. And instructionally, we're thinking more along the lines of deeper learning and having students engaged in what they're doing. And if you're doing that, the scores will take care of themselves. So that's, that's our push in terms of instruction, is making sure that students are engaged in real-world, challenging work. And by doing that, and they do that and do that well, the scores will improve. So, you know, laying any of those fears out there that some people have of, you know, the teachers are teaching to the test. Because I just don't feel like that's happens in our district.
Again, thank you. Anyone have anything to add? All right, then. So we shall move on to enrollment data.
Okay, this is a first of a two-part presentation that we usually do in October and November. The first part being our October one enrollment data, just looking at our numbers of kids and how they've moved and the exit survey. And then, in November, you know, exciting foreshadowing of things to come. In November, we'll look at, we do kind of have to do that child find, where we identify every student in Calver and where they go to school, and look at the shifts of where that, what movement have we had? Have we had more students shift to homeschool or charter schools or vocational schools or whatever? So we'll try to, you know, and I give Gina credit for that, she works very hard.
Thank you, Gina, that's a lot of work.
As an administrative team, we work very hard trying to find every student and where they're going to school and making that comparison over time, because I think that's some important data. So go back to presentation. So October one enrollment. So our October one enrollment for, as of this year is one thousand five hundred and four students, which is down twenty-two students from October one of last year. Overall, the elementary enrollment is up by two students, and the middle high school enrollment is down by twenty-four students. We did lose approximately thirty-three students making that transition from eighth to ninth grade, which is a little higher than usual. We generally have an average of maybe twenty-four to twenty-eight students we lose during that transition. And we'll look into some more detail, like I said, next month on that in terms of where students went. You know, you know, really, in terms of tracking this, someone could go through this and follow this pretty easily. You know, so October first of twenty twenty-three, you could really follow it over time, go back to two years back. And obviously, we have this data back for twenty-five, thirty years. You know, but the kindergarten class in twenty twenty-two out of one twenty-four, as first graders, they were one twenty-two. Now, they've actually had some growth. That class of second graders is one twenty-nine. And you could track, obviously, I won't do that, I won't go through each grade level, I'll randomly pick one more. Two thousand two, a smaller class, second grade was one oh seven, then they went down to one oh three, now they've come back up to one oh five. You know, so obviously, there's some natural variation as you track grades, you know, going through. And obviously, the biggest transitions are always eighth and ninth grade. That's always going to be a biggest transition because students have a lot more opportunities going from eighth to ninth grade. So that, those are all overall numbers, we're down a little bit. And we're down over the last two years, going back to this fifteen forty-eight, which was a growth. Okay, so if you, if we pulled this presentation back from two years ago, we were saying, hey, fifteen forty-eight, we're actually up twenty some odd students. And before that, we were around fifteen hundred. So we've actually gone, we've gone on a little, we went on a little upward path, a little downward path in terms of overall student enrollment. We haven't been below fifteen hundred, but we've been at this number similar to this a few years back. It might have been as back twenty twenty, because this was, goes back twenty twenty-two. And that's good data to look at too over time. So as part of students leaving the district, we do do an exit survey. So I'll just show you some information from the exit survey data. So the data represents fifty-four of seventy-eight students who are attending, who attended the Calver Public Schools last year but have transferred to our district. We had actually much better turnout rate for completion of the survey at the middle high school level than at the elementary level, but that's fine. So we had forty-seven out of fifty-two middle high school students complete the survey. And I think what happens is most of our, most of our ninth graders complete the survey. Most of the kids go to Old Colony, we actually got a high turnout from that grade level. I think, I also think at the elementary level, there's a reality piece of, for some reason, when, when people leave the elementary school, a lot of times, how we find out, not always, but how we find out is we just get a records request from another town. You know, say, okay, we got the records request from Mr. Griffin for second grade. And then we send the records over, we find out they've transferred, and they don't necessarily have the opportunity even complete the exit survey. For whatever reason, middle high school students, people tend to come in and say, you know, I'm taking my kid out. And also, middle high school, we give them things like Chromebooks and, so they have to come in and turn that stuff in. So I think those are some of the reasons I think we have a higher percentage of completion at the middle high school level. You know, where we had, we had forty-seven out of fifty-two, which is, I think, close to ninety percent. So ninety percent of our students who left the middle high school completed the survey or their families. We're at the elementary Where at the elementary, it was only seven out of 26. And so what are the themes from this data? Students attending Old Colony or Norfolk Aggie Vocational School was the leading reasons for students deciding to transfer. That's 27 of our transfers. The second, it's, it's important to point out that the second leading reason for a transfer was students moving out of town. You know, so we had 19 students who reported that they were leaving because they were, they were, they were leaving Carver. And we had several students transfer into the district, even though we had 78 students leave. You know, so we had 78 students leaving is actually 5.1% of our total population.
Wow.
Which actually, that's, that's a pretty big transient rate, to have 5% of our population leave during a given year. But our overall population's only down 22. You know, so we had seven, so we had a bunch of people come in as well. And we'll look at all that a little bit more closely when we look next month at where students are and the percentage of students who live in Carver and are enrolled in the Carver Public Schools.
Okay.
I do want to mention, because it's something we've talked about a lot and something we're always trying to focus on, parents, there is an open-ended part of the survey, so they get to choose these ideas of why are they leaving? Right? And the sec, after Old Colony or Vocational School and moving, the second highest, the seven, was peer relations. Six was athletics. The other seven was a generic other category. But people aren't necessarily putting class size, obviously, there's one or two responses for some of these other things, but out of, out of, you know, it's a very small percentage of people highlighting those ideas as a reason for leaving. I do want to reference that there is an open-ended section to it, and, and I mention this because it's something we, as a district, really want to work on and improve and make sure our parents and families feel supported. You know, so there were five families that specifically referenced bullying on the survey as a reason for leaving. Of the seven families who said peer relationships, there are also, four of the five who mentioned bullying also checked peer relations. So it's like, it's like cross-covered there, if that makes sense? So in their comments, they mentioned bullying in some way, shape, or form. And again, I just want to reinforce with the community of, if you have concerns of anything that's happening in terms of your students, in terms of their interactions with their peers, we want you to report to the administration. We have an online bullying reporting forum. We want people to use that forum. We want people to contact teachers. We want people to contact a member of the administration if they have any concerns in regards to bullying or their students' interactions with their peers. So that's kind of the summary of the data, of where we stand in terms of overall enrollment. And I, we actually do a deeper dive into this next month, but I'll take any questions people have now or thoughts or comments that people have right now.
Anyone have anything they'd like to share or any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you very much for that data. I'm sure we're all looking forward to more information at our November meeting. Okay, so that brings us to upcoming events, of which I'm sure there are a lot of good things.
Yeah, we're always excited about covering our upcoming events. So I will say, the dimension for athletics, we are getting into tournament time, and that may not, that's not referenced, that's not recognized here in our upcoming events because we don't know when those games are yet. But most of the seasons are coming to their close, either, really by next Friday is when the cutoff date is for most of the tournaments. So the week, the first week in November is when our tournament games will probably begin. And we're going to have, you know, several teams in the tournament, from, football will be in the tournament, and volleyball will be in the tournament, and girls soccer, looks like they're going to be in the tournament. Field hockey has an outside chance. So those first week or two in November. And volleyball, football, we'll definitely have a home game, if not two.
Okay.
So they'll, they'll, well, we're going to have a couple of home tournament games. So we've got some exciting times coming up in athletics in the next couple of weeks. Beyond what's listed here, because that, we don't know when those, the dates of those events are, so they're not listed anywhere here on upcoming events.
That is great.
I'm looking for Chocotree, there it is. Chocotree coming up on the 25th. I'm always excited about that. Parent-teacher conferences at the middle high school on the 24th, so if you haven't signed up for parent-teacher conferences, you still have the opportunity to do that, coming up soon. And then we have always, November, though, sometimes, it's no school November with Election Day and Veterans Day and Thanksgiving.
Good times, good times.
A lot of stuff going on in November as well.
No points. It's the best month of the year.
Yeah, I wasn't saying we're taking the month of November off. I was just saying that.
She wouldn't take it off.
We do have a few, I don't know if we have a full week in the month of November, for a variety of, a variety of reasons.
There never is.
And...
I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Thanksgiving game is away.
Thanksgiving game is away this year.
So people can plan accordingly.
Yep. Thanksgiving game is at Middleborough on Thanksgiving at 10:00 AM. And then we'll start getting into our winter sports. And also, elementary parent conferences coming up on the 7th, and also on the 5th for three through five only. So a lot of stuff, it's always take, it's good to take a minute to just share what's happening.
We appreciate that.
All right, then, we're going to, we're going to turn it over to Ron.
All right, Ron. Yes, thank you, Ron, you're up.
Thanks, everybody. I know how to clear a room. I see what it is. The money guy comes up there like, I'm out of here. So I've got a couple of quick items for you tonight. In your financial memo, nothing at the state and federal level, but I wanted to just give you a quick update on the budget calendar. You've got some tentative dates there for both capital planning and budget. So tonight and a little bit, I'll give you a quick overview of capital, we'll go through that together. Today, there'll be no action requested of the school committee, just an overview of capital. We'll plan tentatively to try to do a vote for the 19th, that'll be your next meeting. And tentatively, December 2nd, the school department will present for capital. That's not finalized at all, that was in a very early draft, but we're hopeful that sometime in that timeline, we'll get to present whatever the school committee ultimately votes for capital to the capital committee to move that forward. So that's a snapshot on capital. And then budget, tis the season already. Hallmark doesn't make the card, but we're already kicking off for it. Beginning of November, we'll really kick off our budget development process, that'll end early in December, it's about a month or so to solicit input from all of the stakeholders around the supplies, equipment, materials that they need going into FY26. Early January, the leadership team sort of goes through that together at a building level and make sure that we're prioritizing and being efficient with our resources. You'll probably see as a committee, you know, early Nov, early January, the first look preliminary budget, that's typically when we do it, right around when the state's putting out charity sheets. February 1 has traditionally been that line in the sand that we use for our budget, where we say, okay, on February 1, our special education out-of-district costs and our insurance costs, which are typically our two largest drivers and our two most unpredictable drivers, right? In terms of cost centers, we'll come in, we'll lock them in and project them at February 1 with the goal of using that number for our budget, and any difference, we would use reserves in the upcoming year. Yeah. Then toward the end of February, we typically slate the school committee to hopefully vote a budget, that's assuming that the revenue streams are as projected and we don't have really major unanticipated costs. And then we're queuing up for the select board to vote the warrant and go into town meeting and start our budget. So that gives you a sense of, you know, 10,000-foot view, those are some of the big dates to keep in the back of your mind. Obviously, all subject to changes as budget season gets going. The second part of your financial update is just your warrants. In gray, there are warrants you've already voted, and tonight, we'd ask that you vote the remaining expense and payroll warrants, as always, we put them out for the date and down to the penny. And then we'll have some transfers to share with you as well.
Do you want to do a vote on the warrants first?
Sure.
Just to separate it out?
Sure, sure. I move to approve the warrants as presented tonight.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. And then you've got your transfers, it's the end of quarter 1, so about that time typically. We do have two tabs, I'm actually going to have you stay on the budget tab for a few seconds if you don't mind, it might be easier to, to show you on this. So your budget tab is the beginning of quarter 2. As always, you've got all of your accounts, down to the penny, and if you'd be kind enough to scroll to the bottom, Mr. Neef. It's a lot, yeah. So you can see, you know, row, whatever it is, 235, that's your budget appropriation on town meeting warrant, right? 24, about 24 a quarter. And then it rolls up, well, you've expanded and covered and balanced. But you've got all of your transfers in the next tab, but I want to share with you the transfers here on this because it shows you where the offsets come in in this particular case. So can, does it highlight when I highlight it? No, it doesn't really do that. Can I drive that for a hot second? Would it be easier?
Yeah.
Do you mind?
Do it.
All right, take two seconds. So if you just take a look here, I'm going to make this a little bit smaller just for a second. So the highlights for your transfers for this quarter actually have a lot to do with special education and transportation, and that's been a theme that we've talked about, gosh, over the past year or so. The first two that you see here, I'm going to put them right here, are your special education collaborative costs and then your special education non-collaborative, those are your private costs, right? You can see that your private costs are up a little bit more than budget, but that your collaborative costs are actually coming in under budget. So one of the first things we do, starting in quarter 2, is say, okay, how do we keep our balanced budget? And we're able to transfer some of the funds from what you had budgeted for collaboratives over to some of those private, higher costing, you know, cost centers. The other place that you see a transfer for this quarter comes in what are called your fixed liabilities, right? So we have insurance, it's your liability insurance, property insurance, those sorts of things, that came in higher than typical, right? Higher than projected, but your workers' comp came in lower, and so those offset pretty nicely. So you'll see the transfer there for those as well. The next one is on the way up. This is what I'm super happy about. So we talked a lot about this in the budget last year, this idea of like special education transportation costs really moving up quickly, and that was a function of two things. One, just a sheer number of kiddos who needed those services and therefore needed to be transported, but also an economy that had grown out of that, where a lot of these private companies had sort of popped up and recognized that statewide, there'd been increase in special education needs, and statewide, there'd been increase in homeless kiddos. And so they sort of started taking advantage of communities and school districts and were really charging aggressive pricing. And so we had to reflect that in our budget, obviously, but over the past year or so, and kudos to Maureen Seidenthal and our special education team as well, they have been bringing a lot of those routes that had been contracted out back in-house. And so you see right now, balance, the better part of that $150,000 that was intended to go out the door to these companies are now being able to be used to cover some of our in-house costs, and, as you saw at the bottom, cover some of those tuition costs as well. So it's a win-win for us, it gives our kiddos, you know, safer, reliable transportation, typically done by staff members here in our school district who typically live in town, frankly, and it saves the taxpayers money. And so if you take any highlights away from our transfers this, this time of year, I think that's one of the big wins that we've got. The rest of your transfers, and I can answer any questions you have, but the large majority of the remaining transfers are simply lane changes. So when we do our budget, our budget takes into account estimated lane changes, and then by the end of quarter 1, we know who exactly has done the lane change, and we just adjust the budgets accordingly, right? So if someone does a lane change, and we had someone else leave, and we hired in cheaper, like we adjust for those sorts of things. So you'll see that in the rest of your accounts. The others are simply, you know, some supplies came in higher, some supplies came in lower, and we balance it out. And if you scroll down to the bottom, Mr. Neef, you'll see, as always, we're net zero on our budgets, so we're net zero on all of our transfers, we stay within that total appropriation for the school department that's downtown meeting warrant. I'll answer any questions you've got on anything about budgets, about transfer, and I just requested the committee would approve the budget transfers at your leisure.
Okay. I move to approve the FY25 budget transfers as presented this evening.
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, as always, Ron, for the detailed information that you provide to us. It's, for the accountant and me, it's very satisfying. But thank you also for the transparency, I think it's important that our community know that, you know, we're diligent with all of our taxpayer money.
Yeah, absolutely.
That we receive and that we do our best, so thank you very much. And kudos to transportation for continuing to be able to reduce those costs by bringing those routes in-house.
That's been big this year.
I know it's a challenge, so thank you to everyone.
Sure.
For your efforts. And then this brings us to the capital plan.
Yeah. So this time of year, we have developed our draft capital plan. I added something new this year that I hadn't done in previous years, I feel like it'd be helpful to share with you before we hop into our FY26 projection, just a quick update on what we've done so far with last year's appropriations and last year's projects, right? So it's a high level, and stop me if I'm going too quickly, but, and you've got it here, I won't read to you, but I'll just give you a couple of quick highlights to underscore, and then we can stop for questions at this point. So I want to give you three of the big projects that I think are helpful to keep in the back of your mind. The first is that top one, which is the middle high school AC mini splits. A little context and refresher on this one, we've got a bunch of classrooms in your middle high school that are interior classrooms, they don't have windows, unfortunately, just the design of the building circa 1986, 87. And in the original design of the building, they had these systems to bring in cool air, condition that air, bring in hot, you know, hot air, condition the air, right? Those systems have broken down over the years, and we've tried to find lots of different solutions to maintain them and to fix them. Long story short, the existing systems aren't really well-designed and aren't really able to be maintained effectively anymore. So the cost to try to bring these projects up to speed was, was challenging for us to meet. And so we found funding through ARPA, which was fantastic. And that's what you see in that first, that first paragraph, we used essentially $180,000 in federal grant money to bring in these mini splits. They actually just look like a residential mini split, they'll be going in over the next couple of breaks, Christmas breaks and February breaks and April breaks and those sorts of things, in the rooms that you see listed there, using federal tax dollars with some offset of local, right? We expect to have those rooms squared away by the end of this school year, and you see the very last line that says those last rooms to finish, you'll see that as our first project proposed for FY26. When we were originally thinking about this work, we thought it would probably span three to four years, but the bids that came in for the ARPA came in favorable. So we were able to really bring a lot of classrooms, more than we anticipated, in this first, like tranche of funding. It lets us get this project moving really quickly, and hopefully, if we get approval for that last tranche for those last few classrooms, by FY26, we'll be able to close that project out.
Nice.
Two others that I would share with you, that you may or may not already be aware of, obviously, the Carver classroom renovation, most of you were able to be at the kickoff there, this will be our first full year using that classroom, also thanks to federal ARPA funding. That was a three-year project that started with, you know, work with chef, visits to other schools all around the region, design work, and then finally the project itself. So we're really excited to say, that one's off the list, we feel like that's really a big win for us. The last one I'll just bring your attention to is the concession stand project. This is also, you'll see some of this going forward. We agreed to work with Old Colony, which is fantastic, that'll save us a ton of money on our end and some time as well. What we'll see over the next six to eight months is some concrete work that'll happen, probably this winter, right before the frost, we'll get the rest of the concrete down, and then in the spring, we'll have our Old Colony students come in and you'll actually start to see the new concession stand get erected. We expect that to be squared away by the end of this school year, with probably some finished work over the summer and ready to go in the fall. I won't read them all to you, but I'll pause to see if there are any questions about projects that we're working on now with last year's funding.
Nope. Thank you very much.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you very much for providing that to us. I think it's very helpful.
So the next portion here just gives you some orientation for FY26 proposals. Again, I won't read it all to you, I'll just give you a couple of highlights. First and foremost, when we think about spending money, whether it's your budget or your capital plan, we start with the district's educational blueprint. Anytime we're thinking about any amount of funding, we think like, hey, how are we making our schools safe? How are we enhancing teaching and learning? How are we engaging the community? And how are we making sure that we're efficient with the resources that we have, right? We recognize there's always limited resources in education. That's true of every community. So always thoughtful about trying to get the most bang for our dollar. This is especially true in capital because the price tag for these sorts of things are just bigger, right? So we keep that sort of in the back of our mind as our guiding document for everything that we do, especially when it comes to capital. The other thing I would share with you is that as we sort of develop our capital plan, we think about it in these three buckets. The first is our facilities and equipment. That's the one that you see, you know, front-facing in your buildings. Then we think about transportation. Carver is very fortunate to own and operate its own transportation program. It saves our taxpayers' money, and it provides a higher-quality transportation service. And then lastly, technology, investments in technology and 21st, 22nd century education is a forefront component of your capital plan. So we present them in those three buckets as well. So your first category is your facilities and equipment. Each time we talk about a bucket, we'll start with just an executive summary. It's a 10-year snapshot. Keep in the back of your mind that your first couple of years, so next year FY26 and '27, '28, those are your years that we've got a pretty firm vision for what we need in our schools. And then as you get into your out-years, you know, FY33, FY34, FY35, the purpose there is really just to start having proactive thinking about what's coming down the pipe for your school and for your communities. I'll flag a few items for you to keep in the back of your mind. This has been on our plan for several years, but I think it's important to just name. The first is, you'll notice FY29 looks a little unusual. You've got almost nothing except a single project there. At that point in FY29, you're probably due to have a renovation to your field. For those of you who were here when you first built the field, I'm sure folks talked about like, hey, in about 10 or 12 years, you gotta redo it. 10 or 12 years is FY29.
As crazy as that is.
I know.
Right, as crazy as that is, yeah.
That date specifically picked because that's really your breakpoint. At that point after that, your field's gonna really start to degrade quickly. That's a good year to do it. But with that in mind, we've been planning around that year so that we're not asking for anything else, except we gotta get that project done, yeah. The other that I would just flag for you is in your upper couple of rows there. You see our classroom modernization and pathways plan. You see the middle high school parking lots. Those happen every year. Those are like regular investments that we're doing to extend the useful life of a facility that's getting a little bit on the old side, right? You notice those drop off in '34 and '35. What ends up happening there is you look at like the big picture of your capital in your community. You've got bonding essentially for your elementary school that'll fall off the books in 2042, which means sometime around the end of the 2030s, your community will probably want to start doing like an evaluation of that facility. Early 2040s, you'll want to think about an SOI, and you'll want to have some conversations about feasibility for like either a major renovation or a new facility. That'll be your community's decision, but you'll want to plan your capital out 10 years with that in mind. So you'll want to start paring back your investments in the facility, knowing that at some point, you're gonna do something major to it. That said, I'll borrow what Mr. Neef says because it resonates loudly with me. Your kindergarteners today will graduate from that building. So now is still the time to be investing in that facility to make sure it's providing a high-quality educational experience for those kiddos who will be graduating there over the next several years. So that's why you see that visioning of falling off around the early to mid 2030s with the intention of thinking about giving the community space and resource to think about what it needs next, yeah. So we'll dive into FY26, if that's all right with you, unless you've got questions about like the big picture. Okay. So FY26, your first item, as we just talked about, is that HVAC renovations, the request for '26 there, you see connected to your educational blueprint. The goal there would be to finish the rest of this project that ARPA couldn't quite cover. The very last line there, those are the three rooms that just, we don't have a funding to cover yet. The proportion of funding in FY26 would cover the remaining rooms. The next project is one that has been on the list for a while. Funding is always tight, and so over the past couple of years, it just hasn't quite made the cut for priorities. We'd like to prioritize it this year. Again, you'll hear this theme when it comes to talking about capital in the middle high school. The goal is to utilize a building that's well-built but dated on the inside, right? And so to extend the useful life of the facility, you do these like low-cost, high-reward renovations to the interiors, yeah? Furniture fixture equipment, we call it FFNE. By replacing those sorts of things, you give a shot in the arm to the space and to its usage and its relatively low cost, high return. This one's gonna be for your library. It doesn't touch the walls itself, it just touches the equipment that's gonna be in there, removes some of that old equipment that's original for the building, brings in some new modern equipment for students, community members, and staff. Similar theme, again, it's about extending the useful life of their facility there. This is a multi-year plan. We call this the Classroom Modernization Pathways Plan. The intention here is every year, we identify a high-needs set of classrooms that, again, have good walls and structure, but have some dated equipment within the facility, some of which is original to when the facility was built in the late 80s. FY26 is target in the history department. In prior years, we've done English and mathematics and special education and guidance and so on. Their resources are typically used for the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment in their classrooms. They work with the staff members within the department to determine the exact stuff that each department needs, but it's been a helpful shot in the arm to sort of keep the building looking fresh. The next two are your only elementary projects. The first one is the elementary play area. So this is another one that's been on our list for a couple of years now, and we've sort of bumped along. In the back of our elementary school, you'll see this little berm section of the facility. It's where we have the canopies now, the lunch area, which is nice. That berm area was envisioned by your architects and your designers to be this natural play area, to be this sort of like grassy hill that kiddos can use. The beauty is, they love to use it. The challenge is, you have hundreds of kiddos running on any amount of grass, and the grass just can't handle the traffic, right? So what you see there is sort of what the hill looks like in a typical day. The kiddos still use it a lot, but it's starting to become this sort of fall-hazard, muddy hill. And so the vision here is to grade the hill back.
The muddy hill.
Just behind that, you have the little swell area where some of your runoff goes. So we plan to stretch this.
They also like to go there.
They do, which we try to avoid.
They do like to play in there.
The goal is to split this over two years. First year, '26, we would use the funding to just grade the hill back. It would essentially extend that area where we have the picnic tables and the shaded area. And for '26, we would just grade and extend the woodchips. And then in '27, the school team would come together with students and community members and staff and determine what kind of play equipment might go there, yeah? So we'd ultimately pull the hill back in '26, add some new play equipment in '27 that can extend the play area for kiddos. Your last facilities project over in the elementary school is also similar in terms of affecting the play areas for students, and the theme you'll hear is along the same lines. Your building is sort of like a backwards E. You've got those three wings, and between those wings are super-popular areas for kids to play. There's this wonderful sort of undulating path, and around that is grass. That grass area, in a couple of weeks, is gonna quickly be just worn down, lots of little feet playing all over it. Over the past few years, we've tried a couple of different approaches to seating. The short answer is, if you want that to be grass, you can't have children play on it, but it's a school, and you should have children playing on stuff. So the proposal here would be to pull some of those sections of grass out and put in artificial grass. It's similar to what you have in your turf, but not the same stuff. It's artificial, but it doesn't have the rubberized infill. It has woodchip infill. It's like cork, essentially, so that kids, knowing that young kid's gonna be down in it versus just running on it, it's a natural fiber that they use for the infill, right? We think that will help with giving kids space that is always usable. We think that'll help with our custodians, who are constantly having to clean the mud and all of that. And we think it'll help with parents who are having kiddos come home with mud on the knees and shirts and pants and all that stuff.
And it will help with the aesthetics a little bit.
Yeah.
I also do, yeah.
It gets patchy quick.
It does, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the vision for that. That'd be a single tranche, we'd do that in a single year, and we, depending on what quotes come in, just to want to flag this, this is a kind of material that can be variable in cost, and so we would do as much as we can do, and then we get a better sense of what that will look like going forward.
Okay, cool.
Do you want to stop on facilities?
Questions on facilities? Talk about any of them?
Nope.
Nope. All right. Your next bucket, when you think about capital, is transportation. I'll give you a little overview on transportation while you're taking a look at the 10-year vision. As I said at the start, I think Carver's fortunate to own and operate a transportation program. I regularly go to our business managers' meetings, and we and a handful of other districts that own and operate are the envy of the meetings because there's about four transportation companies that operate in this area. And so the pricing can be whatever those four companies want it to be, and over the past couple of years, that's gone up quite a bit. So owning and operating allows us to sort of manage our pricing a little bit, which is a savings to our taxpayers. But in order to manage and own and operate, you do have to continue to invest in your fleet. And so what you see in front of you is the planning, long-term planning of the investments in the fleet. For FY26, we're proposing two 71-passenger buses. They'll replace our two oldest buses in the fleet. Unlike your car, your yellow buses typically in New England have a lifespan of about 10 to 12 years, sometimes 14, depending on the number of roads it gets, and the better part of something like 100,000 to 150,000 miles. Anything after that, you get pretty substantial body rot, actually. It's less about the engine breaking down and just salt and New England weather breaks down the box itself, right? So we propose two. We typically do one year with one, one year with two, and that keeps us up to speed with our fleet if the proposal is approved. We have right now about an eight-month lead time for delivery, so better than a few years back when it was a two-year lead time, but the lead times are pretty substantial. One of the questions I always get that I put the answer up there to is, you know, what do you do with old buses? They get sold off oftentimes to manufacturers who can sometimes rehab them and resell them or sell them off for parts. Either way, the funds that come in are used to offset the cost of parts for us, brake pads and rotors and all those things that we typically need for our fleet. And the other part of the proposal for '26 is special education van. This is actually not gonna be a replacement. This will expand our fleet, our existing fleet, as we talked about at the outset with our budget talk for transfers for quarter two. We are seeing increases in homeless students and increases in special education kiddos that need transportation. And so having additional vehicle here is gonna let us keep bringing routes in-house, and we believe that's gonna save us money and give us a better service product for our community. That's it for transportation. It's not as exciting as building stuff, but also important. Any questions you've got on transportation, I'm happy to answer.
Depends on who you ask. It's more exciting.
And then your last bucket there is technology. Again, a lot of this is really behind-the-scenes stuff. You can see your 10-year vision for, you know, our capital planning. We've got a great technology team that does a nice job operating and maintaining a lot of our equipment, and so most of what you see in your capital plan is replacement cycle for things like servers and a lot of our hardware as well. So your first item in '25 is really just a FYI. We got a grant, gosh, back in 2022, 2023, from the feds for student devices. And kudos again to Steve Mahoney, our technology director, helped us get that grant. We expected that grant would only last about three years. We've been able to extend that over through to '27, which is wonderful, right? I mean, so you see the requested dollars there is $0, whereas typically, you'd be, you know, looking at the better part of $100,000 in student equipment. That's just, kids now use these devices in education, for good or for bad. That's how it works in education right now. So we're fortunate to be able to have that grant going through to '27. I flag that, though, to just say, in '28, we'll probably be coming back and saying, hey, at a certain point, we're gonna need to start reinvesting in student devices. So you see there in FY28, 175, sort of an alternating years would identify the funding we'd require to continue providing students with their devices. And right now, we use Chromebooks. That could change in the future if there's something cheaper or better in the market, The next item actually popped up on our list, not something that we'd had on some of our out-year projections, but something that's become a real need for us over at the middle high school. So I'll give you a little context on this, and you can see the connection to our educational blueprint really focuses on school safety. The middle high school has a PA system, public announcement system, that is original with the building, and has been kept up pretty well, but the guts of it, like the actual wiring, is starting to break down in the walls. And so every year, we spend a lot of energy resources, like hunting down the wiring, trying to make repairs. There are now sections of the building that aren't getting PA announcements and sections of the building that get them like intermittent, which isn't good. So we flag that as a potential security concern, that we can't get messaging super-easily out to all areas in the building. However, you heard me say at the outset, and you keep hearing this theme from me, that we want to be thoughtful and considerate of resources and try to find a way to be efficient. To replace the entire system and put in something new, the cost would be through the roof. So again, kudos to our tech team and our operations team. They've come up with a solution where we can keep a lot of the infrastructure, like the hardware, but pull out all the old wiring and put in new fiber wiring. We think that'll be able to work and bring the building through, you know, extend its useful life, bring it through to the 2040s, where then the community can have a better conversation of, do you want to do a major renovation? That would include really re-upping your PA system. You need a new building that would have a new PA system. But we popped this over to '26. Again, this is not one we had an immediate need for until we've come to the realization that we just can't keep up your current PA system safely at this point. The next item is the Carver Elementary School Educational Technology Plan. You can see the three years, if you scroll down just a little bit, we've sort of these three years that we've been working on this. '23 and '24 were our staff laptops that came with the building. And over the next couple of years, starting last year and going through FY27, we'll start to slowly replace the AV equipment. You have short throw projectors in that building that came as part of the building. When the building was built, it was the last few years that short throw projectors were really part of new building FFNE, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. And it's not because they're not good, they're wonderful, they're just super-expensive. They're expensive to buy, they're expensive to maintain, they're expensive to just like buy bulbs for.
The bulbs are ridiculous.
Yeah. So we've been doing that because they were new and want to keep them up. But as they, equipment itself, as the hardware started to come to end of life, we see an opportunity here to maintain good service but find a less expensive alternative. And so we've moved to these touchscreens that you see there in the picture. We have them over at the middle high school, they've worked really well. They're substantially less expensive to purchase, and they're less expensive to maintain. And if they break for whatever reason, a replacement is more manageable for you. So for all those reasons, I think that's a good shift to make. It has a very low impact in terms of, you know, usability, other than having to learn the new piece of equipment, obviously. So in '26, we would continue that process, that'll continue through '27 as well. Oh, and I'm sorry, I always get the question of like, well, what if you have a short throw projector that works still in one of the classrooms that you're replacing? We keep everything that works. We will use it for parts for everything else that doesn't work, and at a certain point, once we get to only these TVs and we're out of short throw projectors, anything we can sell, we will sell because of lots of other schools who still have buildings using short throw projectors.
Great. Thank you for that.
Middle high school technology, not as exciting. We finished up our touchscreen TVs last year, maybe the year before, and now we're in the process of just staff laptops. Again, technology in the 21st, going into 22nd century education is just part of doing education. And so we have a replacement cycle to make sure that our staff have the equipment they need to access their online curriculum and access a lot of their virtual and digital curriculum platforms. The last thing I share with you each year is the 10,000-foot view executive-level summary. It's everything, 10 years out, in every bucket, breaks it down for you by year, breaks it down for you by project, rolls it up in terms of how much we plan, project to spend each year, and then at the very bottom, you see your total annual, you know, capital improvement plan proposal by year for all of our funds. The capital process, I just would add before we close, is not just one person's project. It takes a lot of input from a number of folks. Dave Seidenthal and our operations teams, certainly Steven Mahoney and our technology team, Maureen Seidenthal, you know, over in transportation, our building leaders, a number of staff sort of contribute to determining, like, where's the priority? number of staff sort of contribute to determining, like, where's the priority, what are the kinds of things that we'll think have the most impact for kiddos, have the most impact for our community, and then we sort of do the work behind the scenes to figure out, can we make that figure, that figure work? I'll open up to any questions that you might have.
Our thought process for tonight was just to introduce the capital plan, bring it back in November for a final vote in terms of, you know, give the community the opportunity to think about it, are we missing something, are we adding suggestions, and so we're not looking for a vote this evening, unless for some reason, the committee felt like, yeah, this was it.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, well, there's one additional part of the discussion, yes, one additional part of the discussion is that the town is looking to move a little more quickly in terms of making capital decisions. Though they haven't had the first capital LA meeting, Jack says it's scheduled for November 6th. But they have access to at least do like an initial prioritization of our list.
Okay.
So, right now, at this point, this would be the list we'd be giving them, but they have made it clear that the school committee hasn't voted or approved it yet. And, but then also, I don't know if we want to have a discussion of if we were going to pick three or four items as a top priority, they're looking for each department to do that.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's a value to having that discussion tonight in terms of, from this list, what would we prioritize as most important?
Right. Do you know what, well, I'm assuming you know what your top three to four items are on here?
Actually, that's a tough question for us because I feel like that's the priority list.
The whole list.
I think one of the, one of the processes we do is we start with a bigger list than this.
Yep.
And we sort of prioritize it down, it's like, these are the things we think should get done, will be effective to get done. But I also appreciate, there's only so much money that goes around, and so at some point, you better get it back.
And I don't think it's, in my opinion, you know, ultimately, our next meeting is November 18th.
Yep.
You know, so that, I don't think capital decisions are going to be made by November 18th.
No.
Because the faculty has everything all, all finalized by the 18th. You know, so they, they are asking departments to prioritize their lists, and, but not necessarily do a, for what we're here, not a, not a, I don't even know how many exact number of questions, not a 1 to 10.
Right.
We're going to have to, they just want to say what are the, they see as the key priorities. But it is hard because obviously, I'm sure, you know, I naturally, my natural inclination is going to go to the facilities things, but ultimately, you know, Rod's going to say we need a bus.
Do you need two buses?
Two buses.
Do you need two buses?
Probably.
And then.
Do you need a minivan?
And then also the, the PA system repair, it seems like a priority.
Yep, absolutely.
And then, you know, certainly, like, like Rod said, this kind of is our priority list.
Yep. Okay, well, if we have to, if we have to cut it from there, then I guess we'll ask for expert input and make those tough decisions.
Yeah, and I don't think it's unreasonable to say that we, you know, well, obviously, as we move through the process, the, the school district will be more than willing to work with the community with the funds that are available, but this is our, this is our list right now. And if we get to the point of we need to start pulling things off the list to meet the needs of the entire community, we're more than willing to have that discussion. But these are the things that are important to us.
And we've done that in the past years, where we had our list and the funding was X, and we said, okay, well, let's deprioritize this, or we'll punt it to a future year, and like, you know, those sorts of things are definitely doable.
And then my point in terms of the November 18th is the committee could think about that a little bit as well. I mean, when we come back on the 18th, we could do some, you know, more of, even if we did it reverse, like, what would come off first?
Right.
You know, and taking that approach to say, what's, what's the thing that, you know, when, when push comes to shove, as Jackie's represented us in capital LA, you know, what things would we drop off our list first to meet the needs of the community? So if people can be thoughtful about that as we head into the 18th, that'd be great.
Sure. Okay, I think that sounds reasonable. I agree. Thank you very much for all that information.
You want to do disposition material, so you can, you can.
Yes, Ron.
This is a, this is a super-quick one. So per your policy, DN, we are proposing the following items be deemed surplus. So typically, whenever we have an end-of-school year or, you know, going to a new school year, anytime we have equipment that has ended or, or come to the end of its useful life, bring it in front of the committee to identify as surplus. At that point, we take a couple of different actions. If it is usable in some way, so in case of technology, sometimes we'll break it down for parts and we'll use the parts. If it's usable out in the other, you know, into the sector, we'll put it out for sale in some ways, and in some cases, if it's simply not usable, disposed of. But we try to go through that process first, identifying if there's an opportunity to recoup some value, or even donate it to, you know, nonprofits or other schools if necessary. What you see in front of you is a set of equipment from our technology team. We have an old voicemail routing system, we changed over some phones this year to voice-over IP phones, and so you've got the phones and the routing system, three servers that, as we talked about in our last presentation in capital, those are part of the FY '25 capital projects, we have the new servers and software up and running, the old servers will be deemed surplus. Same is true with, again, capital, some of the new computers are replacing the older computers, you see the computers and monitors there. Again, the short throw projectors that you see there. We had a couple of TVs that have been damaged, those are damaged and will not be able to be sold, obviously. The printers, pretty straightforward, and the Raptor kiosk, that's what typically folks have been using to sign into, you know, in this case, the middle high school. It's been replaced by an iPad kiosk that's just been more effective for us and less expensive, does the same thing.
Great.
I was just looking for a motion to approve these being deemed as surplus, these items.
I move that the technology items reviewed this evening be deemed as surplus.
Aye, second. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And then our last thing for this evening is our second reading of policy ACA, nondiscrimination harassment based upon sex. We had our first meeting at our last, our first meeting at our last meeting, you know, and just as a little background, over the summer, the Office of Civil Rights updated its guidelines on the implementation of Title IX. I reached out to the attorney to see if we need to update our policies based upon the changes in the implementation guidelines through the Office of Civil Rights, and they recommended us, recommended that we adopt this policy. Our discussion last time was all about the name, so we went back and had that discussion to decide to remove the name. So the change you'll see tonight from how last time we reviewed it, it just says the title.
Perfect.
So it says, inquiries about Title IX may be referred to District Title IX Coordinator. The District Title IX Coordinator is the Director of Special Education, gives a location, because we're really key that the policy says you have to say where you could go to see that person, or how would you contact them. So without, so we took the name out, but said, you know, Director of Special Education, located 3 Carver Square Boulevard, Carver, Mass., with the phone number 508-866-6103 for the Director of Special Education's office. Otherwise, the policy is the same as we reviewed it last time. And tonight, we've been looking for a motion to approve the revised ACA, nondiscrimination harassment based upon sex.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Okay, I move to approve policy ACA, nondiscrimination and harassment based upon sex as presented this evening.
Aye, second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to reports from the school committee. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report out?
I just want to remind everyone in the community that MCAS is on the ballot and we need to vote for, about that.
Absolutely.
Yes. Correct. And happy Halloween, everyone, have a safe and fun one.
I agree. I'm going to miss going to the trunk or treat this year.
Aww.
But there's always next year.
There's always next year.
Does anyone else have anything they want to share?
Yes, I would love to, if you don't mind. First, I want to say thank you to our student ambassadors and our captains council for coming tonight. Carver seems to be having a banner spurt year for the fall season, so I just wanted briefly mention the youth sports because Carver cheer competed this weekend, came home with two firsts and a second. We've got three competitive teams going to regionals, but the best part about this is we actually won the town cup, and so it means we had the highest overall score for the whole day, competition-wise. There's been a league that has held this for the last five years, Edgewood, which is in Rhode Island, and we stole it from them this weekend, so it was really kind of nice.
Way to go.
So congratulations to all those girls that competed, congratulations to the varsity high school team as well. I know they had a very successful invitational this weekend as well, so, and that's it. Oh, yeah, happy Halloween.
Right, yeah.
I'm up and running, by the way.
Oh, nice.
The display is up and running, so, it was, it was a slog this year, but we're, we're there now. Oh, and Fan Days tomorrow at the elementary school.
What is Fan Days?
They get to wear anything from their favorite sports team, so it can be the Patriots, it could be Red Sox, it could be your favorite youth team, could be any of that, so.
Very cool.
Yeah, very cool.
I think it's very fun.
Wear your gear tomorrow.
Right. Anyone else? Okay, so super-quickly, before our next meeting, which is just November 18th, correct?
Yes.
Which is, which is just crazy. This Friday, I go to Las Vegas to attend the National School Board Association's Council of Urban Boards of Education Conference, which I'm very much looking forward to. It's always a good opportunity to learn best practices from other districts and bring things back to Carver, so give everyone something to look forward to. And then also, on November 6th through the 9th, is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents. What is, what is the second S?
M-A-S-S.
M-A-S-S.
School Superintendent.
School Superintendent, okay. I'm, sorry, I blanked on the second S there. So there are joint conferences happening November 6th through November 9th, which I will also be attending. There are some great speakers scheduled, some, some great sessions, I'm looking forward to connecting and attending the delegate assembly, where hopefully the slate for leadership for 2025 will be approved, and then I'll report back on that as well. So I just wanted to let everyone know that, you know, there are opportunities beyond Carver for us to learn and grow from other school committees and other school boards. Many other states, they're called school boards and not school committees, so just wanted to, to put that out there, and give Scott a little bit of a heads-up that I'm sure I'll be coming back with questions, probably Ron, probably Meredith, but all in, all in, you know, good faith, and if there are opportunities out there, then I think it's worth having discussions about, so. With that, again, yes, happy Halloween. I happened to see a couple of weeks ago, someone pass a school bus on my way to work, so I, again, asked the community to please just be patient with the buses. It's, you know, frightening enough when the students have to cross a main street, please just be respectful when their lights are flashing, please stop and just wait, and please be mindful so everyone can be safe. It's getting darker out there, so I know it's getting a little bit more challenging to see, so if everyone could just please keep that in mind, as with Halloween. And that is all I have to share, so if no one has anything else to share, then I would love a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I move that we adjourn the October 21st, 2024 open session of the Carver School Committee.